Good evening. Welcome to the January 6th School Board Work Session. The time is now 5:35 PM. The School Board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment, so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Here.
Mr. Doran is excused. Ms. Doolian is expected on Zoom. And Ms. Maple?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Thank you.
Next up is our discussion on school consolidation. Superintendent Dr. Luke Minor, Assistant Superintendent Kate LaPlante, and Andy DeGraw, Chief Operations Officer, will discuss school consolidation. Dr. Minor, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
All right. Thank you, President Burnett. Tonight, we'll start the first of three work sessions dealing the administration, detailing the administration's recommendation of school consolidations that was based on the community's created consolidation framework. I'd like to take a minute to thank all of our educators, community members, community partners, community partners and our borough staff who participated in the facilities conversations and our ongoing strategic planning efforts. School consolidation is a necessary step to align resources with enrollment. Enrollment has been declining over the past 20 years, while the number of schools has increased. Ensuring our schools remain strong, sustainable, and focused on delivering the best education for every student is a goal for us. Administration is hoping the board will take decisive action this year, so we do not have to revisit the conversation of school consolidations for the near future. This is something that we would like the board to make a decisive decision, and that sets us on a path for stronger educational outcomes and more sustainability and predictability in the future. We'd like to ask the board to hold questions until our presenters get to natural pauses in the slide deck. We've built those in for you. There's a lot of information that's going to come at you, and so we'd like to chunk out the presentation this evening. And then at the end, if we haven't covered all of the questions, there'll be time for the board to ask those questions. So for now, I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent LaPlante and our Chief Operating, Operations Officer, Andy DeGraw.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Thank you, President Burnett. So, Mr. DeGraw and I will be, along with Dr. Minor, the spokespeople, but you will definitely hear from all the executive directors over the course of the next three sessions together. And I'd like to take this moment to thank especially Rebecca Herby, who took all this information and put it together in a comprehensive slide deck that we can share with you tonight. So, like Dr. Minor said, we have built-in breaks. You'll see those clearly with the slides, and at those times, we'll pause for any questions in that section. Tonight, January 6th, we're going over the recommended plan. This includes the why the consolidation is necessary. We'll just revisit that briefly, explaining the framework that was developed, and especially going into details of how that framework was applied to our different regions to determine which schools we're recommending for closure. In future sessions, January 13th, we'll cover buildings, the transportation, redistricting, and staffing. And on January 27th, we'll go into detail for how this impacts our students and our education delivery at each of the schools. So, if you feel like we're not covering something, it might be in those future presentations, but we will be getting to them. But again, if there's questions that come, let us know, and we'll make sure to build that in.
All righty. So, why school consolidation? A lot of us here at the table have been in this topic for quite some time, so it's not necessarily, you know, we here at the table might understand why, but for the listening public and for the community, those who might be new to the topic will review the why. So first and foremost, the budget has gotten a lot of the publicity, obviously, but we feel strongly in this first section that learning conditions and educational opportunities for students will improve as we right-size our footprint. So the first and the last bullet points in this section are pretty connected. We will be able to have a greater number of classes at our target PTR. So right now, true story, we have a lot of schools where in each grade band, there might be 40 kids. So it's too big for one, but it's really not, not big enough for two. Or they, it might be at 60 kids. You can have the same situation where it's too big for two, but it's kind of too small for three. So we're in these tweener ranges of grade bands at each school. If we increase the capacities of each school, it gets more kids in the grade band, where we're in the 75, 80 kids per grade band. That's ideal for a 25, 26-student elementary classroom. So right now, we have a problem with that, where there's either classes that are too small or too big. What that does is it creates that last bullet point, a high number of split-level classes. And that's a challenge for educators that we'll talk more about in a subsequent work session. And then also, we feel strongly that we'll be able to provide those ancillary support services to students, counseling, nursing, food service, et cetera, et cetera, reading supports, where we consolidate our footprint and those hard-to-fill positions that are often, we have a hard time filling, that we'll be able to decrease our vacancies and provide better services to students. The next section, increased efficiency. So as Dr. Minor mentioned, we've seen a steady decline, sometimes a big decline in enrollment, and it has created a footprint, that's a physical footprint, that's significantly larger than what our enrollment currently stands at. And so what ends up happening is we're spending dollars on physical facilities. It costs the same to maintain and heat and light a building, regardless of whether there's 300 students in the building or 450. And so that cost per student goes way, way down the higher that enrollment can be in each school. So improving efficiency is a big one. The next section is our long-term budget sustainability. Again, I mentioned that's, that's always high in the publicity arena, is our budget challenges, but it is real. We've, over the years, we have, I always use the analogy pulling arrows from the quiver. You know, our deficits have been so large that we can't really, we can't tackle those deficits with one item. It's many items that we tap into to balance our budgets. But this has been a big arrow that, that we have at our, at our disposal. And so it goes a long way towards, towards balancing our budget this year. We've used it in the past, and we'll, we'll go over that in a little more detail in a subsequent slide. And then lastly, kind of related to increasing efficiency, as has been mentioned, we have a declining enrollment, declining population in the borough. It's really a statewide, it's really a national issue, right? Districts all over the country have declining student populations. And so just right-sizing our footprint with the amount of students that we have today. Dr. Minor mentioned, we have more schools than we did with higher enrollments 20 years ago. Most people don't realize, think of the charter schools. So a big part of that, having more schools, we have five charter schools, when 20 years ago, we might, might have had one or two. And so we're actually adding square footage as our enrollment has declined over the years. So just right-sizing that physical footprint is very important to ensure that we're dedicated as many dollars as possible to people and human capital, as opposed to physical, physical facility resources.
So a guiding focus, of course, is students, and we believe strongly that this consolidation plan allows us to stay focused on students and use our resources effectively and efficiently to better serve them with their education. All the reasons that Andy just, that Mr. DeGraw just talked about are part of that, and we're going to remind us of that focus throughout this presentation. A question has been about, like, what is the appropriate capacity for a school to be at? And currently, our average is around 68% capacity for elementary schools, when the ideal recommended capacity is closer to 85% or above. And Andy can go a little bit more into why being at that more, the, the recommended capacity is a better use of our schools?
Yeah, so each school, regardless of how many students are in a school, it takes a certain number of fixed staffing, and we'll go over a list here later on in the presentation, but there's, you know, you have a principal, you have certain custodial staff, you have an admin secretary, you have fixed supports that have to go into a building before one student enters. And so the, the higher capacity that a building is, it's just more efficient and cost-effective, as opposed to lower percentage capacities. We're spending additional dollars on those fixed costs than, than is, than is necessary. And side note, each of you has a binder that we've provided with appendix. We'll refer to it often. There's a lot of information on some of these slides, and we provided that information in the notebooks for board members for you to be able to refer back to, as we're kind of going through some of these slides quickly in our work sessions, in your downtime, when, you know, your bedtime, if you're having a hard time sleeping at night, bust out some capacity charts, and, you know, that'll, that'll help you sleep a little easier. But if, if there's any questions also on that information, we're happy to field those. And then possibly, as we go through these next meetings, if there's additional information that would be helpful for you, let us know, and we'll do our best to get that information and add it to the, the notebooks that board members have.
So this is a reminder, a look back at our school consolidation framework and the phrases, the phases that we went through to get here. So we have completed Phase 1, gathering community feedback. That really began last spring. Phase 2 was this fall, using that feedback to create the framework. Phase 3 was applying the framework to come up with the district's recommended plan. And now we are in Phase 4, where we are providing that plan and giving detailed explanation and answering questions for the board, so that you can make an informed decision. So we are currently in Phase 4 of this plan. And tonight specifically, we're going to be going into details by region of how Phase 3A and 3B were applied from the framework to make the decisions.
So one, one factor or piece of information that we worked into our decision-making process, administration's decision-making process, was the 0-4 population density. We wanted to include it here because we hadn't necessarily talked about it before, but we wanted to look at what's, what's in the pipeline in different geographic regions as far as upcoming school-age kids in those areas. And so we looked at, on a percentage basis, what's the population density of, of people living in these different areas between the ages of 0 to 4? And so there listed are some of the different neighborhoods in the district that were higher on that list. Fort Wainwright as well had some higher densities that would impact Lad and Arctic Light Elementaries. And then the next slide shows, and I believe this is in your, your notebook as well, we included this, is a kind of just a visual map showing higher densities versus lower densities. So the green shaded areas being higher naturally. A lot of those areas are, you know, in the central region, more in the downtown Fairbanks proper, as well as North Pole proper areas, and Fort Wainwright, as I mentioned, and then lower percentage densities out in the outline areas. So just a new factor, new data point that we worked into our, into the equation and wanted to include that and talk about it, make, make everyone aware of that.
All right. This is the slide that you'll see throughout this presentation, indicating that it is time to ask questions. So if there's any questions that you have about the initial part that we just shared, this is a great time for those questions. If there are none, we'll just move on. So I'll pause.
Any questions from the board at this time?
Excuse me. Ms. Doolian would like to ask a question.
Ms. Doolian, go ahead. Ms. Doolian, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are. We can hear you now.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, yes, I'd like to know a little bit more, and I, and I've looked a little bit into the appendices so far, and thank you for that detail. Um, when we're talking about population density, was there any consideration or is there any differentiation between military families that may be here for a short-term period versus families' density in areas with more long-term permanent residents? Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I believe, so we got that information from a demographer, and I don't think there was a differentiation between military families and students or, or kids in the sense of, you know, how long were they going to be residing in that area? I don't believe that was a factor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Not seeing any at this time? Go ahead and continue, Mr. DeGraw and Ms. LaPlante.
All right. So moving right along, we're, this is a map that we, to give the credit to Ms. LaPlante for, for kind of putting this visual into motion. It's a pretty good way to visualize our district broken out into five different geographic areas. We have west, north, east, central, North Pole, and southeast. And if you look back to the framework, the first item there for consideration is geography. And we've talked about this a little bit in the past. And this is an important point to make as we're going through and considering the five schools that we have on the table. You know, and inevitably, questions will come up, you know, well, why not this other school? And comparing this school to this school? We, as we looked at geography, we wanted to ensure that we didn't close too many schools in one area of our district to where, that would likely create kind of a tidal wave domino effect across the district of students. They would fill up, there would be too many students in closed schools for adjacent schools to take, and so that would create kind of a wave from those schools to the next schools. And so it was important for us to identify these different geographic regions and, and select the best candidate for consolidation within those geographic regions. So it's important, that, that's important in the sense that we're not comparing a school in the west region to the southeast region, or the central region to the North Pole region. We're comparing facilities against other facilities in that region. So that's, and I'm very important, because inevitably, it's like, well, you know, if you're talking condition of the facility, well, what about this school over here on the opposite side? We're not comparing those two schools. We're comparing the schools within the geographic region.
I would just add, we're not just comparing the buildings. We're comparing all the factors within that region. So we're looking at also the capacity, transportation. So there's, so, but within the region, we're applying all of those factors. They just end up coming out a little differently based on the region and what we find.
Yeah, that, every factor in our list, not just condition of the facility, every factor is being compared to facilities in that region. So from there, we'll move to the recommended consolidation list.
This is our list of recommended schools. So within the southeast region, we recommend closing Salcha Elementary School. In the northeast region, we recommend closing Two Rivers Elementary School. In the North Pole region, we recommend closing Midnight Sun Elementary School. In central Fairbanks region, we recommend closing Hunter Elementary School. And in the west region, we recommend closing Pearl Creek Elementary School. So I want to take a moment to show great respect and appreciation for these schools today. Each of these schools was visited by our administration and given this news. And I think that our, both our, our principals at each of these schools and our staff at all these schools, today was a difficult day, and everybody handled it with a lot of professionalism and poise. And while we are going through this process, we have a lot of empathy for what that might feel like. So now we're going to go into each region and talk at detail about how this framework was applied to come up with the determination at, within this region. And after, at the end of each region, we will pause for questions.
Yeah, and I just want to second what Ms. LaPlante just said. Obviously, this has been a difficult process. And, you know, it's, this isn't, unfortunately, it's not our first rodeo, right? We've, we've been through this before, definitely a challenge. And, you know, the main reason for me why it's a challenge is because all of our schools are good schools. Every single, you go through, from top to bottom, our schools in our district, and they're phenomenal schools, and they, they have great staff, teachers, students. And, and it's, so, in, in that sense, it's difficult. At the same time, as administration went through the factors and went through the things that we were considering, clear, clear candidates rose to the forefront of the, the best options for consolidation. And so while it's extremely difficult, it is, we acknowledge that. The schools that we have on the list and that we're going to go through right now, region by region, those, those, it became evident based on the factors that these were the best options to, for administration's perspective, these were the best candidates for, for consolidation. So starting with the southeast region, we have ACE, Anderson Crawford Elementary, and Salcha. We've selected, identified Salcha for consolidation. The, this slide, and you'll see these slides consistently through the different regions. Initially, just the, the specific region in consideration. And then after that, it just shows that region in relation to the rest of the district. And so then, moving to the next slide, so the factors, the main factors that identified Salcha for consolidation were a low and declining enrollment. The capacity existed, excess capacity existed in an adjacent school in Anderson Crawford Elementary. We've consistently had challenges in staffing this outlying school, just simply because of geography. There's a limited transportation impact on routes, district routes. You know, we don't necessarily want to say it's a minimal transportation impact, possibly on students, on, on our route count, our district-wide route count is what we want to communicate there. The cost per student to run a small school is, is very high. And then the overall total cost savings are estimated at right around $1 million a year. And important to note, those aren't one-time savings. Those are annual perpetual savings. So students from a consolidated Salcha Elementary School would move to Anderson Crawford Elementary on Isles and Air Force Base. And then the next slide is just an illustration showing, and again, we'll see these, this one's simple and straightforward. There's a couple of these areas where this, this graphic will be helpful to see where the students will be going. And this topic, we will, we will go into in more depth next week as we look at our redistricting and transportation impacts and how that looks with consolidation. And then lastly, we look at, and again, a lot of numbers here. This one's a little more simple, but the subsequent areas are going to be a little bit more complicated. That's why we have this information, I believe, in the appendix, appendices as well. But here, we're seeing Salcha Elementary's current enrollment as of December 6th. And then next to that, we show Anderson Crawford in two respects. One with Salcha open, so currently, those are the numbers with Salcha open. 362 at Anderson Crawford, with 191 seats available at a 65% capacity. If we were to consolidate Salcha Elementary into Anderson Crawford, that creates an enrollment, as of now, of 424 students, 129 empty seats still, and then at a 77% capacity. So again, this region is, is pretty straightforward. One school consolidating into another. This will be a little bit more helpful as we get into some other regions where there's students from one school going to two, three, four different schools. You'll be able to see how those adjacent schools are impacted as far as capacity is concerned.
So now we'll pause for this region for questions, if there's anything specific to this region.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Thank you. Can you, am I directing my question to you or to them? Thank you. Can you tell me the additional bus time that a child will have going from Salcha to, is it Arctic?
Anderson Crawford.
Sorry, Anderson.
Yeah, so great question. We're going to go into that in detail on the 13th. But to give you a, just a short anecdotal response, with a lot of these scenarios, you're going to have some students where they have a little bit longer ride time. However, at the same time, you're going to have students with shorter ride, ride times, actually, just depending on location of students and whatnot. We have a situation to where the, the ride, depending on where you live, is actually in some cases shorter to Anderson Crawford than going to, to, to Salcha. But yes, there's, there's a wide range. We're going to have graphics that show the ride time changes for basically the, all students impacted. So there will be a lot of information there that we'll go into in a lot of detail on the 13th. Similar, similar situation with Two Rivers. We'll talk about that, but the same thing applies to Two Rivers, so, you know.
Want to go to Zoom, Mrs. Doolian?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My question for Salcha is more about the student support out there. Am I understanding correctly that they're, that they don't have a counselor this year? And if that's so, are we able to provide additional resources for the students to help them through this, this news?
Yes, that's correct. We don't have a counselor there, along with a few other positions that we have had trouble filling, which is, again, speaks to our consolidation and the need to try to provide those services. But we have a robust support plan. Our Student Support Services is going to be working very closely with the impacted schools and with students. So we'll cover that, again, probably primarily on the 27th, but we are aware that we do need to provide support to all students, including, of course, ones that don't have a counselor right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Maple?
I remember last year, one of the things that came up when we were talking about students from Take a Sick Brown potentially going on base was concerns about base access being a barrier. Are there, is that something that's been considered in terms of, you know, if that is a barrier, what, how we would work with those families?
Yeah, so we've had some initial conversations with colonels on base, and historically, students have gone from Salcha to Ben Isles and Middle High School. And so there is an experience where they're used to going on base. Now it's flipped, because elementary students will be the ones going on base. And so it's worked effectively in the past for the majority of our students. And if there's a concern for a student here or there, we'll work individually with the base and that student to ensure that students can gain access and that their, their families or guardians can support them through that process.
Okay, thank you. I have one more.
Go ahead, Ms. Maple.
In looking, I don't know how you would do this, but I'm going to ask anyways. In this specific consideration, and I suppose my question will stand for the Two Rivers one as well, has there been any specific consideration of the, in all of the millions of things you're considering in making the decision, the economic impact on these smaller communities of a building closing?
I think that we've been looking at what we can do for students educationally as our primary role, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that has not shown up. I think that would be difficult for the school district. And, you know, I think anybody really, in a short amount of time, to directly determine what the economic impact would be. So we did stick closely to the framework, and that doesn't show. So we did stick closely to the framework, and that doesn't show up on the framework in terms of things that we would consider.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board at this time? Seeing none, please continue, Ms. LaPlante and Mr. DeGraw.
Thank you. So now we'll go into the Northeast Region, which is the Two Rivers and Weller Schools that are adjacent to each other. And again, in reference to where they lie in the district as a whole on this representational map. So we're going to get familiar with this. And as far as the factors for closing, for recommending closing Two Rivers Elementary School, similar factors to Salcha, a low and a declining enrollment. We have not been able to have them at the capacity even to maintain some of this teacher, class sizes that we normally have had. It's been different, we've had to continue to subsidize them at a greater rate just to have three teachers there. The capacity at the closest elementary school at Weller being available to receive those students and having capacity for that. Again, consistent staffing challenges, limited transportation route impact. There's already routes that students would be able to take that exist, and we wouldn't have to necessarily add routes. The cost per student is higher at the smaller schools to provide the education. And the cost savings would be one point one million dollars. So students would move from, from Two Rivers, they would begin to attend Weller. And then to continue that flow, they would go to Tanana Middle School. So they would be directed towards in-town schools instead of to the North Pole Region, which actually helps us alleviate just a little bit of the, the capacities at North Pole. So the transition plan, like I just said, Two Rivers to Weller, Two Rivers to Tanana. And for class, for enrollment changes, currently, Weller, while Two Rivers remains open, has four hundred and ten students with one hundred and fifty-nine seats available and at seventy-two percent capacity. There being sixty-nine students currently attending Two Rivers Elementary School. If we close Two Rivers, Weller would be at four hundred and eighty-two students with still eighty-seven seats available and at eighty-five percent capacity, so right on that magic number. And Tanana would go from five hundred, five hundred and ten to five hundred and thirty and be at eighty-eight percent capacity with still seventy-two seats available.
I'll pause. Any questions from the board regarding Two Rivers? Seeing none, Ms. LaPlante, Mr. DeGraw, please continue.
All right, so jumping to the North Pole Region. The recommended school for consolidation there is Midnight Sun Elementary School. And again, a representation of the North Pole area relative to the district. And then the factors that played out for, to make Midnight Sun the candidate in North Pole really centered around the need for a repurposed location in the North Pole area. We have recently terminated the lease for the facility that Star of the North currently meets in. And so we had an immediate, we have an immediate need starting next year for them, for a spot for them to move to, as well as need for child find services in the special ed arena, preschool arena. Best family meeting spots, kind of a best satellite location that would serve the North Pole area. And so this locate, the location of Midnight Sun was ideal for a repurposed building, being closer to North Pole proper. It avoids the possibility, Ticasick Brown Elementary has a little bit bigger capacity. And so it, it keeps more capacity in the North Pole area and alleviates the need to potentially need to move students onto Fort Wainwright and Arctic Light Elementary. It's a lower impact to socio-economically disadvantaged students in the North Pole area. It maintains the existing feeder system and keeps all students currently in the region going to North Pole area schools. And then there's, again, minimal impact to transportation route needs district-wide. And then the total estimated cost savings is approximately one point five million dollars. And that takes, that number takes into consideration the building being repurposed. That's administration's official recommendation is to repurpose Midnight Sun Elementary School. And so the students would flow from Midnight Sun, both east and west, to Ticasick Brown and North Pole Elementary. And yeah, that was another advantage. Just the geographic location of Midnight Sun was conducive for it to be the consolidation candidate in the region, being right in the middle. And so capacity impacts to the two remaining schools in the North Pole Elementary, or the North Pole area. Currently, three hundred and forty-four students at Ticasick Brown. That would move to five oh five if Midnight Sun were consolidated. And then North Pole Elementary, three fourteen currently, would move to four seventy-two. And then the respective capacities would be ninety-one percent at Ticasick Brown and then ninety-five percent at North Pole Elementary. Any questions on the North Pole?
Ms. Maple.
So for those two, the tick numbers and the North Pole numbers, of course, are higher, more close to capacity than, than the, the last group we looked at. Would the idea be that if enrollment increased, that there would be redistricting for Arctic Light to pick up those? There's still significant capacity there?
Yeah, we would, we would have a lot of possibilities. That could be one. You know, there's excess capacity at Anderson Crawford. There's a definite link between airmen and women living in the North Pole region that work on, on base. That's another option. But yeah.
It's not a concern that those would be at ninety-one and ninety-five?
It's not. It's, the immediate, the immediate concern is those, those available seats, they might not seem like a lot, but that would, that, if, if we increased that, if we went to one hundred percent on both of those schools, that would mean a several hundred student increase district-wide. Because these are, those are seats just available to those schools and those, does that make sense?
It does, yeah.
So, I mean, we'd have to see a four, five hundred student increase district-wide. I, we would love to have that problem. And we, there's many different ways we would, we would address that, what you mentioned, Ms. Maple, and then, you know, looking at other school possibilities. But I had one more thought. I lost my, lost my train of thought there, anyway, but yeah.
That answers it for me, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Dullian.
Thank you. Yes, for this recommendation, the cost savings, does that include the cost savings of the lease for, for the Star of the North program that we will no longer have? Or is that cost savings going to be reflected elsewhere when we do budgeting?
Yeah, the, the latter, the latter point you made. So it's not reflected in the savings, Ms. Dullian. Well, but we do have that captured, we will have that captured in our proposed budget.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. I just was, I don't, don't have a specific question, I guess. I'm just wondering, as Ms. Dullian was about, the recommendation to repurpose rather than close? And if the cost savings is greater or, or less if we repurpose?
Yeah, so the, the amount of the savings that was reduced was, I don't have the number, is somewhere in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range is the cost to, to maintain a building open with utilities and then some minor custodial services needed to do that. The, just for information purposes, the annual lease for the Star of the North building was about a hundred and seventy thousand a year. So, but yeah, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the number that we're using to maintain a building open. For example, Nordale Elementary, Nordale Building Education Center, it's about two hundred and fifty thousand range to keep that building open. So, did I answer your question, Mr. Burgess?
Dr. Minner.
I'll add to that as well. And I think beyond just the straight numbers, we do feel like repurposing provides programmatic opportunities for students in that region that haven't really been realized in the past. One that didn't make the slide deck that we had conversations about the other day is providing some SMART options for students in North Pole. SMART, for those that don't know, is for students that are on long-term suspensions or expulsions. And oftentimes, those, those students struggle to get to Nordale because transportation is a requirement of the families. And so oftentimes, they either go to homeschool, which doesn't meet the needs of all of our students, or they drop out. And so that's a great option for our students. There's also been a call, and we've had many conversations over the years of providing more homeschool best support for students in the North Pole area, Salcha area, Isle and area, where we can transition teachers out there to provide rotating needs, different meetings, different activities within that school. Having a dedicated space to do special education child finds within North Pole. And so, you know, there will be some savings from the lease, but maybe a slight increase with the utilities. But in our minds, keeping the building for those programmatic needs is great. And then also, in a situation where if Isle and exploded, Fort Wainwright exploded, and we needed to stand up another school in North Pole, we have that facility to do so. I don't, we would, we would be overjoyed if that was the case. We don't foresee that happening, but that, that is another factor in continuing to maintain that building. And then lastly, a lot of conversations with the Borough Mayor and his staff about the impact on the borough in terms of handing facilities back. And so that definitely lessens the impact on the borough if we continue to maintain it and use it for our needs. Thank you.
Ms. Dullian.
Thank you. I have a question. Is the savings that is projected from the repurposed buildings a net savings or a gross savings? So have you, have you, like, accounted for the additional costs that we will have to, you know, for maintaining the, the building open and repurposing it? Is that reflected in that, in that savings that you have projected?
Yes, Ms. Dullian, it is a net savings, less those costs anticipated to keep it open. One thing I was, you know, want to make sure everyone understands is when the district closes a building, there's also a loss in revenue on the state foundation revenue side of things. So these, these, these savings numbers, there's a hold harmless clause where the, the district is held harmless from that revenue loss for two years. The savings that we're initially going to see, and then, and then after that, there's a three-year step down. So the, the savings steps down to a little bit lower levels, but we're still seeing savings from the large elementary schools in excess of a million dollars in the one point one, one point two million dollar range perpetually. Initially, they're at the higher one point five, one point seven, one point eight. And then they step down over a five-year pro, step-down period, down to about one point one, one point two million. So, this is full disclosure on the savings numbers.
Follow-up, Ms. Dullian?
Yeah, I do. I, for future meetings and work sessions, it would be helpful to see that financial projection forward as those savings step down. Because, you know, I think that we're, we're all focusing on sustainability right now and, and stabilization. And being able to at least see how these decisions will financially impact us in the near-term future would be really helpful, too.
Yeah, we can show that. I'll, I'll bring it to the next meeting. I'll bring a, a step-down illustration that shows the savings.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I'll put myself in real quick for a quick question. In regards to BEST, with the repurposing of Midnight Sun and utilizing the facility not just for Star of the North, but also possible BEST satellite offices, does that mean that we could have services available for families to start the transition? If, if maybe BEST is what they choose to go to, starting in July, that way they have that access? Or how long would it be before those families out in North Pole and further could use it?
Yes, I think we could. You know, we work with Lori Beam and her staff. And we do have limited staff for BEST that works over the summer, but we could work on some kind of rotational process to ensure that students and families that were interested in enrolling from North Pole that haven't been enrolled could do so at that facility and then have an open house of sorts either in the summer, in the summer or in the fall. So that's something that we could work on.
Mrs. Hardy.
On that same subject, would you be anticipating increasing the FTE for BEST in order to staff these two locations in your budget?
We've discussed that. We'll see where that lands in our proposed budget with everything else. But, you know, and we'll see where current enrollments are at with the proposed budget as well. And so at this moment in time, not necessarily proposing an increase in FTE, but I do think it would be a rotational basis of at least our existing teachers that would provide some services and time out there.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. LaPlante, please continue.
Thank you. So we'll be looking at the Central Fairbanks Region. Our recommended school to close in this area is Hunter Elementary School. In relation to the rest of the district, here's where they are in the center, with their neighboring schools being Denali, Arctic Light, LAD, and Anne Wean, and also a little bit Barnett. Some of the factors that we considered here, one is that it is an older building with more of its systems at end-of-life and needing a lot of maintenance and repair. There's, on that zero-to-four age population, this is an area that has a declining and a smaller school age population than other areas respectively. There's been a shift in housing and how the housing in that area is utilized. And there's a steep decline in enrollment over the years, significantly seen at Hunter Elementary School, perhaps because of the different use of housing. And the cost savings for this school would be one point seven million dollars. Students from Denali, from Hunter would go to Denali, U Park, and LAD Elementary School. And then we would propose expanding slightly the walk zone for Barnett Magnet School to incorporate a few more neighborhoods where students could walk directly to Barnett, and that would diversify their attendance as well. So this is the flow. We would have Hunter to Denali, Hunter to U Park, and Hunter to LAD, with a small number of students going to Barnett as their new attendance area school. The capacity breakdown, currently, we have schools with Denali at three hundred and four students, seventy-two percent capacity with one hundred and eighteen seats available. LAD at three hundred and seventy-five, sixty-eight percent capacity with one hundred and seventy-eight seats available. And University Park with three hundred and seventy-five current enrolled students, one hundred and eighty-nine seats available and sixty-six percent capacity. With Hunter closed, those, we anticipate these would shift to Denali being at three hundred and eighty students, forty-two seats still available and ninety percent capacity. LAD would shift to four hundred and ninety-seven seats, or students with fifty-six seats available at ninety percent capacity. And University Park would go to four hundred and ninety-eight with sixty-six seats available and eighty-eight percent capacity. And we have data that will show that we have had schools in this range before and run school very well without concern. So, yes, it, you know, it might feel uncomfortable to see ninety percent capacity, but we have a lot of confidence that we would be able to provide quality experiences at these schools and still have room for all the additional things that need to happen in a school at this capacity.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Hardy.
So with expanding Barnett's walk zone, given how full that school is, that impact probably wouldn't be seen in anything other than a kindergarten classroom as far as new students being able to access the school?
We would work with Barnett to make sure that they would have the capacity for any of the students that were in their new walk zone. What would happen, yes, at the kindergarten level with new, as a lottery, they would not have quite as many lottery spaces for new enrolling kindergartners or first or second graders. So we looked at it, it looks like there would be a little bubble in the second grade that would need to be supported for a year or two. But it would really not be an impact for kindergarten because it's a lottery school. So we just determine how many students we accept via lottery and the rest are, come through their attendance area.
Follow-up?
Follow-up.
So it wouldn't displace any current Barnett students?
Yeah.
Mrs. Dullian.
Yeah, I had a, this, this question perhaps pertains to all of the recommendations. When you project what the capacity will be if we close a school? you project what the capacity will be if we close a school. But with these in particular, moving up towards that 90%, you know, I, I know that one of the goals is that we, in, in some point in the future are able to potentially bring class size down. So if we are able to invest in our schools and our neighborhood schools and bring class sizes down more to, or more closer to what class sizes are being held at our charter schools, what would the capacity be then? And again, this is more for the future, and I don't know if we'll be in the situation where we can make that investment this year. But I don't want us to get into a situation where there is such a big discrepancy in class sizes between our charter schools and our neighborhood schools. And if we do have a chance to bring those class sizes down with the neighborhood schools, I'm, I'm concerned about those capacities being so close to 100%.
So there's a couple ways to approach this question. I'm going to first say that the overall capacity at the school is not directly related to what a class size experience for a student would be. We can have 90% capacity and have plenty of classroom space available to keep classes closer to our PTR. In fact, maybe even do a better job at that than we're currently able to depend because of the, you know, the, the changes that Mr. DeGraw was talking about, where you have either classes coming in slightly lower or slightly higher, and we have, we struggle to have that right at the, just right spot. So again, the overall enrollment at a school is not a direct correlation to the class sizes that students would experience. And we, I can go into some of that in, I think we have some data that we'll be able to show on some later slides, either this week or next week. What it does address class sizes is the PTR and the, you know, the budget, really, and how much money we are able to direct towards hiring staff.
Any other questions?
Okay, that's helpful. Yeah, thank you, that's helpful.
Any other questions? Ms. Maple?
So in one of the slides, in the transition plan, that Barnett Magnet Walk Zone would increase, taking on some students from Denali as more students from Hunter went to Denali, I assume, does that just mean they would, since Barnett is close to capacity, that just means that they would decrease some of the lottery spots to increase the neighborhood walk zone? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none at this time, Ms. LaPlante, please continue.
All right, so jumping to the West region, the school recommended foreclosure in the West region is Pearl Creek Elementary. So the factors here with, with this region is Pearl Creek's minimal walk zone in relation to other schools in the area, minimal impact to lower socioeconomic populations of the area, has the greatest number of major systems within the building that are at their end of life. Additionally, not listed on this, in this slide is Pearl Creek is not on the city utility system, and so it's much more difficult to maintain for our maintenance and custodial staff than other buildings in the area. The, would, has a lower zero-to-four population in the region, and maintains the existing feeder system, and it has a estimated annual cost savings of 1.7 million dollars. And then, just tied into that minimal walk zone factor, the number-one factor there, the consolidation of Pearl Creek compared to other schools in the region had significantly lower transportation costs relative to the other schools. So if we were to close other schools in the region, our transportation costs would go up by several hundred thousand dollars because of larger walk zones in the area. And then students, the flow of students would be from Pearl Creek Elementary to Wood River to University Park to Ann Ween, and then a small number of students to Weller Elementary. The corresponding capacities, enrollments and capacities with a consolidated Pearl Creek, currently Ann Ween is at 367, they would move to 454, from 66% capacity up to 82% capacity. University Park would move from 375 students to 498 students at 88% capacity. Wood River Elementary would move from 348 current students to 471 students at 84% capacity. And then Weller Elementary would move from 410 to 482. And I believe, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that includes Two Rivers students going, so this is a combination, 72 student net increase, combination of Two Rivers as well as a small number of Pearl Creek students, it would create an 85% capacity at Weller.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Burgess?
I'm assuming because the numbers on the slide for U Park are the same here versus on the proposed closure of Hunter, that that's also the case?
Yes, same exact concept. Correct. These are cumulative numbers. If, Ann Ween is probably similar, it's taking students from a couple different places. And then, an important thing to note that we'll go over as well next week is there are also students who are, will be changing schools from schools that aren't closing. So as, as the, part of the overall redistricting plan, in order to create a balance, we were looking heavily at socioeconomic status of the different areas, making sure we have a, a nice distribution of those economically disadvantaged pockets of our district that we had a, had a good balance. And so there are a number of students that will be, you know, their, their attendance areas will change from schools that are not closing. And so these numbers are all-inclusive of those situations as well.
Glad you mentioned that, because I was wondering why the math wasn't working out.
Yeah. Yeah, there's several moving parts here that we'll try to bring some clarity to next week. I think it's a lot of information, but yeah, we're going to provide it for your notebooks that you'll have in your off time, and then we'll, we'll do our good job. Another big thanks goes out to Mr. Hinton, our Transportation Director. He was really the main driving force behind the scenes of providing us data, real-time data that we could use. The redistricting effort was, was no small, small feat to, to accomplish. And so a lot of thought went into that. And so, yeah, these numbers might not line up on the surface, but we'll, we'll, we'll make sense of them next week.
Dr. Minor?
And I did want to point out, this chart also helps with the inbound and outbound students for each school, and so you can take a look at that, and we'll go into more detail of that next week, but wanted to provide that to the board in the appendices.
Any other questions from the board? Mrs. Hardy?
From that same section in the appendices, you've mentioned that it keeps our existing school feeder flow chart, and so we have what the new proposal would be, but if you aren't, like, I'm not entirely sure on what it was before the change, is there a possibility to get that?
Yeah, so we'll have, we'll have maps, and then we'll have charts. Want, you're wanting to see status quo current, right?
Yeah, so that I'm able to tell, you know, did U Park always go to Ryan? Or was it once to a different place? So that we understand how that's also impacting families?
Yes, yes, we will, we'll have that information.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please continue.
Thank you. So this is a breakdown of the number of students that would be impacted, and this includes students impacted at schools that are not closing, like Mr. DeGraw said. So for example, students at Ann Ween, we anticipate about 99 students who are currently attending Ann Ween that would be attending a different school next year based on the boundary changes. So this amounts to 1,304 students, 38 of them being North Pole, North Pole Middle or North, or Randy Smith, so the middle or the high school, all the rest being at elementary schools. Obviously, the largest number of impacted students comes from schools that where their school would be closing, but there are students that would be impacted with some kind of change or another across the district. Some of these are neighborhoods that just a few years ago were maybe at one school, then were changed for, to accommodate that boundary change, and now are changing back. Our hope is that we can stabilize this so that for, you know, 10 to 12 years, there's, we don't face these changes and, and families can anticipate, you know, buying a house in an area and being at that school for a while. In addition to cost savings of not maintaining the building, this is another way of kind of giving you an example of the cost savings that are associated with staffing, which is of course one of the biggest costs of running a school district anyway. So not having duplicate roles such as principal, music and PE teachers, counselors, nurse, library associates, administrative and attendance secretaries, custodians, food service staff, and then of course the utilities and maintenance. So some of these have been hard-to-fill positions, and so not having to fill as many of those positions is a benefit to students because it means that we actually get at providing the services that we are trying to provide, but it is a cost savings.
This, a lot of times people ask, well, how is there savings when schools are closed? This is not a complete list of how we tap into savings, but it's, this, this is the bulk and majority of it. Additionally, we, we do even see savings, so classroom teachers obviously follow students. So where the students go, classroom teachers will follow those based on the established PTR. We do also see some small savings in classroom teachers, however, because inevitably, there's a number of buckets that aren't full, so to speak, at the schools that they go to. And so the first things that they do is fill up those buckets to the PTR, and then additional teachers are added. So we always see at least a couple of FTE savings, even in classroom teachers, when, when we consolidate schools. So, but this, not a complete list, but a pretty close-to-complete list of how we, we see the savings. And then, I mentioned this earlier, just kind of a summary of the cost savings. So the five schools together equates out to about a $7 million initial savings for the first two years. To Ms. Dulean's question earlier, next week I'll have an illustration of how those, those savings will decline as the hold harmless plays itself out. That'll settle at a little more than $5 million perpetual annual savings, 5.1, 5.2 is my educated guess right now. But yeah, I'll, I'll have an illustration that shows that. Initially, for the first two years, $7 million in annual savings. And then just an illustration of, we'll have our proposed budget that will go public the middle of February, and just an illustration of how this, this topic factors into the overall budget picture. So we're looking at an estimated $16 million deficit to start out with. The, we've, the contracting out of custodial will provide approximately $3 million in savings, and then the school consolidation, if, if we consolidate five schools, would project out to about $7 million. So just for context, and for folks to understand how this, again, I mentioned this is a big arrow, it's, it's a, it's a big part of our, our process that we can take advantage of to, to balance our budget for FY '26. And so there's context for the board. Even if we do close and consolidate five schools, we'll still have a 5.5 to $6 million approximate saving, or deficit in order to tackle. So just wanted to provide that for context for the board. And then, as far as a, want to emphasize rough timeline here, but we will look at July 1st of 2025, closing schools, actually 25, 26, we'll be looking at closing Salcha Elementary and Two Rivers Elementary. And then, those are asterished. There is an option that if the board desires, we can have these conversations going forward, an option to have them as best satellite home schools. Again, if we were to do that, that would reduce potential savings, would be additional cost to do that, but that, we wanted to put that out on the table as, as options for the board to consider. And then the double asterisk recommending that we do repurpose Midnight Sun Elementary for the various purposes that we outlined earlier. And then an estimated handback to the borough of Pearl Creek Elementary in the '26, '27 school year, and then of Hunter Elementary in the '27, '28 school year, if neither of those buildings are repurposed. Want to just stress the fact, and that we can't, we, there, there's no way to really articulate the amount of work that would go into five school buildings. We do have experience with three, and that was a tall, big challenge, but our staff stepped up to that challenge, and we, I think we did really good work in doing that. But five schools would be a significant challenge, be very difficult to, to do that in a tight timeline. So I think, you know, as Dr. Minor mentioned, you know, the borough will have challenges on their end as well if, if they were to receive schools. We want to make sure that, you know, we don't, we don't have a timeline that's too rushed to where things kind of fall by the wayside and don't go ideally. So we're, we're projecting a prolonged timeline to return those buildings and, and again, give ample time as well to the prospect of repurposing those buildings. If, if our community can use those buildings, I think that's the first option, rather than, you know, a significant cost of either letting them sit idle or, you know, demolishing a building these days is, it's kind of crazy how much that costs to do, so.
So to be specific and clarified, that is the timeframe for the building being handed over to the borough or repurposed, not the timeline for when the school would close as an operating school. So at the very beginning of this, you know, at the end of this school year, at the beginning of next school year, all five schools that we're recommending foreclosure would close as far as being schools for students to attend, and they would go to their new attendance area schools. So that is an immediate change. This slide is specific to kind of a proposed timeline for handing back or repurposing the buildings specifically.
Dr. Minor?
The other addition is Lori Beam and Ms. Gilliam and I met with charter principals today just to get an idea of their interest level now that they know what schools are available, their interest level in utilizing one of these facilities. If the board does take action to consolidate schools, it is within the district's responsibility to offer those spaces to charter schools, and I do think that there may be some interest with some of our charters in looking at utilizing these in the future. And so want to say that this is a preliminary plan, but that could change as charters work their, through their processes with APCs and, and look at these potential options down the road. And so it might not line up, because charter schools are in leases with individuals, and so, you know, it might not line up where they are able to get out of their lease if they wanted to go to Pearl Creek by '26, '27. But if we knew they were interested, that's something that we could potentially work with them on. And there's a number of benefits, I think, for the school district in doing that and the community in doing that. Mr. DeGraw talked about in terms of the community, you know, we're not paying for unfilled buildings or paying for buildings to be torn down. These were purposefully built for public schools, and so charters are a part of public schools within Alaska, and so if they could utilize one of these facilities, that would be great. It also helps our charter school students within our charter schools. Many of our charter schools have pretty expensive leases, and they have to make trade-offs based on the amount that they have to pay for rent and utilities. And so there are savings there for our charter schools that they could go, then hire additional staffing to provide additional opportunities for our students, which is a great thing. So all to say that this is subject to change. We'll continue to talk to our charter schools and other partners that might, might want to use our facilities and keep the board updated as we go through that process if the board did consider consolidations in the end.
And just a reminder that school consolidation is difficult, but we believe it is a necessary step to align our resources with our current enrollment and ensure that our resources are going directly to students and being used effectively and efficiently. So that is our guiding statement through this process. And next week, we will focus on the buildings and the facilities maintenance and the transportation and the redistricting. We've taken some notes about some of the financial questions you have, so, you know, we will add those in where appropriate. And then the, on January 27th, we will again be before you, we'll have, you'll probably hear from more of the executive directors from different departments. We'll talk about special education impacts, teaching and learning, Title I impacts, and overall support plan for students and staff and families, and how, once this decision is made, what we want to put in place to support students. I've said before, I feel like we're taking an approach where it's people first, building second, and I want to continue that. There's your last question slide, we made it.
All right, we do have a question on Zoom, so we will go to Mrs. Dulean.
All right, we do have a question on Zoom, so we will go to Mrs. Dullian.
Thank you, President Burnett. I have a question for the administration about the charter school leases. If the, if charter schools move into buildings that we would be closing to neighborhood schools, would we also have revenue, then capture revenue as a school district for providing those buildings to those charter schools versus the money right now going to private lease, private companies and private leases?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Hardy?
Just on the same vein, charter schools, I've received a lot of questions. We received emails, why aren't they on the list? Why aren't they being considered? And I know we've addressed it before, but we probably have a bigger listening audience tonight than we've had. So I feel like laying that out right now and explaining state statute and also like, this is what we can and can't do.
Yeah, that's a great question. I can take that, then feel free to add on. So via state statute, we are not allowed to close charter schools. The school board, once they enter into a charter, which is a 10-year agreement with a charter school, we're committed to that charter school operating within our borough for that amount of time. There's very limited instances that a board can revoke a charter. And that's based on charters not meeting academic targets that we have expectations for or, you know, financial issues that they're not budgeting properly at that charter, at that charter school. None of those things apply currently for charter schools. We have great charter schools here in Fairbanks. We have great relationships with them as a school district. And so that is why we are not allowed to consider consolidation of charter schools as due to state statute and having those 10-year charter agreements with them.
Okay, Mrs. Maple?
I have a couple, and whenever Tim listens to this meeting, he's going to be very proud of me.
Fantastic.
Okay, so when, I'm going back to the example of cost savings, the list of positions and... So when we put together, when you put together a projected budget, those numbers are assuming that we could fill all of the positions. It's budgeting for positions we know might be vacant the next year, but we're considering the expense of them because ideally they'd be filled, correct? So assuming that there, I mean, not assuming, there are a lot of vacancies in our district right now. So a lot of these positions, while they're listed here as cost savings, am I right to assume that they're cost savings because they'll get, they'll no longer have to be vacant positions in a budget, as many vacant positions in a budget? And it's not necessarily that these are a bunch of people that are going to be out of a job, but rather be able to be placed in other vacant positions?
That, that is generally an accurate statement that you just made, Ms. Maple, yes. From a budget perspective, what we have to budget for, that's the nature of the savings.
Okay.
Yes.
Not, okay.
And...
It's not saying this is a list of people that are going to be fired.
Correct, yeah. Inevitably, each year, we have a certain number of resignations and retirements that, that at the end of the school year creates vacancies, right? Because of those resignations and retirements effective the last day of school. And so then, yeah, folks that are remaining would just, could just move into those vacant positions. Basically, the net effect is it reduces the number of people that we recruit for over the summer, if that makes sense.
It does. Can I ask one more? Similar to Ms. Hardy asking, just, it's an opportunity for some clarification on, you know, why we're not talking about charters. Can you, I know it was discussed at the last meeting, or perhaps it was in an email, how, briefly, how we, how the facilities group, that's the wrong word, landed on focusing specifically on elementary schools?
I can, yep. So based on the feedback, starting last spring, with our rounds of surveys and our focus group interviews, there were specific questions around grade banding and what the community thought about our current configuration or considering other grade banding opportunities. Both our strategic planning team and our facilities team looked at that data that came back. And there wasn't an overwhelming push from the community that said, we wanted to do a change of grade banding options. Based on that, our middle schools are near capacity or close to capacity. So there is not room for a consolidation of a middle school currently if you keep the grant, grade bands the same. There's also not capacity to close one of our neighborhood high schools. We have had conversations about doing something potentially different at Hutch in the future, but that would not be a cost savings opportunity for the district. That would be a re-envisioning of what a program looks like and trying to get at offering more opportunities and access for students, not currently at Hutch. So that's a down-the-road conversation that we want to have, and we'll work with the board on that. So that leads us back to only considering elementary schools for consolidations and closures. And so that's where we're at today. And even in the last round of focus group interviews that Education Elements did for us, they tested that grade banding question again and asked, you know, whether or not there would be interest in changing what our grade banding options are. And there wasn't a resounding, yes, we should look at something different. And so that's why we're primarily focusing on elementary schools now. And then you look at the capacities, obviously, once you're at that conclusion in terms of focusing on elementaries, it really shows that we should be doing something more efficient for our district, given the overall capacities for our elementary schools averages around 67%.
Mr. Bridges?
Just to follow up on that briefly, and then I have another, if that's okay. Follow up on that briefly, and then I'll have another. The, one thing that I've heard from some community members or, you know, letters to the editor is that the information on the results of those surveys is not readily available or people are having a hard time finding it perhaps. Could, could we make sure that all that information is easy to find for the public?
We will work on that. I'm not sure what that looks like, given the amount of responses that were provided. And so there were a considerable amount of responses and open text responses as well that both the strategic planning teams and the facilities team sifted through. And so we'll consider that and see what that might look like. And I do, can I add one more thing? I do want to say that, you know, both our strategic planning team and our facilities team were broad-based teams, so it wasn't just administration sitting around the table looking at that data. There were educators, meaning S S staff, F E A staff, F P A staff, district administrators there. But there were also a number of community members, families, community partners, and borough representatives as well. And so we tried to get as broad of stakeholder group together to look at the data that was provided. And that group came to the conclusions that brought us to where we are today in terms of the framework that was created. And then we applied the framework and brought the list forward.
Thank you. My original question is much more boring. But I was just looking at the timeline to return the buildings and just was wondering how that, or if the cost of maintaining those buildings for another year or two is, was accounted for in the savings numbers?
Yeah, so those costs would be pretty minimal, but they are included, but didn't, didn't make a big difference. So the, the cost of just basically, I don't know what the technical term would be, but just, you know, shut the heat down to 50 degrees and turn the lights off and not have any custodial needs. We'd have some, make sure that we did rounds and kept apprised of the building situation so we didn't have an emergency and a catastrophe. But those costs to do that would be pretty minimal, much lower than repurposing a building. But yeah, we consider.
Ms. Dullian?
Thank you. I have, I would like to see in the future specifically how much money charter schools are spending on their leases and how much we would capture if they were to move into buildings. I know that we don't have the authority to move them. I know that that is up to those, those schools themselves. However, they are public schools and we are a community, and it would be helpful to see that as a board member. So I'd like that for the future. And then the second question I have, if I may...
Go ahead.
Is pre-pandemic numbers of homeschooling. Where, where were we pre-pandemic for? And I'm not just talking about best, but overall participation in homeschooling from students in our district? And has that number as a whole, not just for best, started to decline? What, when do those students come back to schools? Is there kind of a, if they do come back? The thing that I'm concerned about is, are we, are we putting ourselves in a situation where if there is a change in homeschooling students to return to neighborhood schools, are we going to be at or above capacity in some of these regions and not able to serve those students? So I don't think that, I don't know if you have that tonight, but that's, that's something that is, that I'm really considering as we look towards like the next kind of five years.
Dr. Minor?
So an initial response to that is no, homeschooling in general has not decreased in popularity within the borough or nationwide, homeschooling and correspondence education is one of the fastest-growing options for students, I would say, within Fairbanks and the country. Pre-pandemic, we were at around 275 students in our homeschool program, and we've seen as high as 1,200 or 1,300, I believe, in best. And so it is an attractive option and continues to be for Fairbanks. Now with that said, we have also considered what happens if there's growth in that area? What happens if students return from homeschool? And I think we can confidently show next week, we've accounted for classroom space within schools to handle overflow situations or students coming back in a pretty big way. I also think us, as I mentioned earlier, maintaining Midnight Sun and hanging on to that building really helps that effort. If for some reason there was a large buildup at Iles and Air Force Base or in North Pole in general in terms of huge growth, we have that to fall back on in terms of growth opportunities there. But no, I wouldn't say homeschooling is declining in popularity. I think it continues to increase in popularity as parents consider that option.
Okay, thank you. I just have one follow-up. And it's more of a, I just want to, I know the answer to this, but I'm asking it for the public. Neighborhood schools legally must accept a student which is in their, which is in that, in that neighborhood enrollment. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. So regardless, you know, when a student moves in, if they decide to come in, we have to, you know, we accept them even if that pushes up over our P T R class size?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Hardy?
First, I have just a general comment on charter school leases. And then I did have a question. When it comes to charter school leases, and I know this because my kids go to a charter school, and I'm actually on their facilities committee. And so over the past few years, I've done quite a lot of work in this area. If a charter school were to move into Joy Elementary School, they would rent it from the borough at their nonprofit rate, which is an extremely good rate. Excellent. So it would be foolish for us to, when we'd be poor partners, to think we are going to get them to pay what they are currently paying private contractors to rent our buildings. And that is not how Anchorage handles their charters, and I don't think that that's a fair partnership. I think there is a case to be made for a reasonable rate. But if we're charging more than it would cost if we gave it over to the borough and then the borough rented it out to them, that's a bad look.
Can I respond?
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Minor.
I fully agree with you, Ms. Hardy. And that's why earlier in the meeting, I talked about potential savings that charter schools could see and the additional educational opportunities that might be had by those schools. And I think that's a really exciting option and opportunity for our charters. They do have some very high rents. And I don't see this as an opportunity for the school district to raise revenue and gouge charters to fix our budget issues. That's not what we would be looking at, and that's not why we're in business. We're in business to help students and provide as many opportunities as we can. And I think this is a great option for doing so.
Are there any other questions from the board at this time? Mrs. Hardy?
And it's, might make everything feel even worse. So to Mr. DeGraw, and I'm asking more just like general. I, it's a long ways off. We go through all this, we've made these horrible cuts, we find $6 million more to cut. What does fiscal year '27 look like? Do we have another multimillion-dollar deficit?
So that's a complicated question to answer that is dependent on a variety of different factors.
Funding doesn't change.
It depends on how much our expenditures go up.
And a part of those expenditures are staffing costs. And so next year, we know we'll be back at the table with our employee groups. If revenues do not change for the school district, that will make for a very difficult negotiation cycle for the district. And so while we don't necessarily anticipate huge deficits for the future, one of the things that the board will have to consider is labor contracts because that is a big driving factor for our continued deficits.
Mr. DeGraw?
And just to follow, piggyback on that, the district is, the arrows in the quiver are pretty much gone. So if, you know, if, if the board accepts the recommendation of administration and closes five schools, we can all see the capacity levels that we see. There's not five more schools that we can close. They're, they're not there. We're running out of arrows to pull. And so those are obviously some big decision points for our organization.
Dr. Minor?
And so, Ms. Hardy, I think what you're getting at is this really is a call for advocacy for our community to talk to their legislators, write to governor, and let them know what these impacts are on our families, guardians, and students. Fairbanks is in a rather unique position in terms of the substantial cuts we've had to make year after year, partially because of the loss in enrollment of students. But lots of school districts across the state are facing that. But partially also due to the lack of our local municipality not funding to the cap. And so when you look at municipalities like Anchorage or Junior that do fund to the cap, they're not having to take as extreme action as what our board has had to take. And so coupled with inadequate funding levels from the state, we can't continue to do this in terms of major cuts because what it will eventually boil down to is class sizes continually increasing year after year because there's nothing left to cut. And so I really implore people listening and that are upset about school consolidations in general and all the cuts that we've had to make, please talk to your legislators. Now, I do want to preface, even if a large B S A increase were to come and inject our school district with a lot of money, I think we should still be at the table talking about school consolidations because of the loss in enrollment and the... school consolidations because of the loss in enrollment and the potential of reinvestment back in our schools to lower class sizes, add back music, and do some of these things that we've wanted to do. And so I don't want people to get the false sense that when we're asking our legislators to adequately fund education and the governor to sign off on that, that that would somehow save our schools that we're talking about today. But it is a call to revitalize our schools and think about what they could become in the future with adequate funding.
Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you so much. Yeah, I just would like to clarify, I would still like to know what those leases are, and I agree that they are paying more right now and would be paying less, and I think that that is a good thing. However, we are looking at how much blood can we get from every single stone, and if that is an option that will help us just a little, it's something that I would like to have in front of us. And I'm not suggesting gouging as was commented. Thank you.
And...
You'll have Dr. Minor, yeah, absolutely.
So, Ms. Dulean, we'll definitely get that information, and my verbiage of gouging wasn't intended towards you, that was just reflecting that, that's not administration's intended action in terms of looking for charters to potentially enter vacated buildings. So we'll definitely provide that information to you and the board.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. No, I understand, thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the board? Seeing none at this time, anything further from administration?
No, I just want to say I really appreciate having the opportunity to go through this. I feel like the flow that we're developing is really good. I hope that that's positive for the board. Thank you for allowing us to pace it out so that questions could happen throughout. You'll probably see us repeat that opportunity in the next couple of weeks, and we've taken down some notes of things that you'd like to see, and we'll make sure that those get added where appropriate.
Fantastic. Mr. DeGraw?
And then just my final thought was, Dr. Minor took the word right out of my mouth, revitalize. That's, in the end, the title slide, I think you guys have it in your binders, right side of revitalize and focus on revitalize. We feel strongly that this, this can, you know, in a challenging time, this can re-energize and revitalize. And even if we do see an infusion of funding from the state, our recommendation remains the same, to have school consolidation so we can revitalize our school district with the programs that we've lost. I hear Mr. Doran talk about restoring, look at what we've cut, look at what we've eliminated from our district over the last just five to 10 years. Look at how class sizes have increased, the programs we've cut, on and on and on. And what, if we do receive a nice bump in funding, which we should, then let's revitalize our school district in a way, an unfortunate way that we need to do that is through consolidation. But it's a little bit of a painful process in order to move forward off of a solid foundation and really be able to provide the education that we all want for our students and community.
Thank you, Mr. DeGraw. At this time, that will bring us to our board comments, or, oh, it's a work session, that's right, sorry, my bad. With that, we are adjourned.